Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear you. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ron Brooks.
Aye.
Scott Ren.
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
Town official employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner Adam Menard.
Here.
Staff Assistant Rachel Pressley.
Present.
DDIS Director Darlene Coyle.
Here.
Good evening. This is open meeting of the Town Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, August 18th, June 20th. Now called the order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor Baker's Executive Order, Rule 12, 2020, due to the current state emergency of Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In open meeting, the transmission of the COVID-19 virus is required by the county laws to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, Planning Board is convening by remote participation for the public only, although some members of the Planning Board are physically located in the Selectman's Office meeting in the Town Hall. Those members and employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 1-33747477, or the public can join via computer at thegotomeeting.com/join/133747477. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board employees, members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials, all supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business and ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and to state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will ask first, ask members of the public who wish to speak identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. If technical difficulties arise, Chair suspends meeting, will attempt to resolve, make a resolution. And now we can continue. First on the agenda is the A&R 8 on Commonwealth Ave. Have to make, ask for a motion to open the hearing, right? No. Do I have any comments? Is anyone here from 8 Commonwealth Ave?
The, to the Chair, the A&R was pretty straightforward if it's all the zoning bylaws, so in my mind, there's no question about it.
I didn't have a problem with it, so do any of the members of the Board have comments? Scott?
John Regan.
Wendy? Ron?
No.
Nick? Or Steve?
No comments, John.
So I need a motion to make a vote to accept or to approve?
John, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is that Nick?
This is Nick. Yep.
Ron, I'll second that.
And that was Nick or Steve?
Yes. Nick.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Scott Ren?
Aye.
Wendy Steinheilbrüger? Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
And aye, John Regan, vote aye. It is a vote. 7 o'clock, applicant LMS LLC DBA Mosquito Squad requests for site plan approval under Section 3.2.5.7 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for property of 496 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., map 57, parcel 135. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make that motion, John.
That was Ron Brooks. Do I have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor? Scott Ren?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Sorry.
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
And myself, John Regan, aye. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here from the mosquito squad that would like to explain what they want to do out there on Route 20 on Washington Street?
Um, yeah, Corey Broder here from Menard Engineering representing Mosquito Squad, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Um, so also Chris Boise and David Mackey, I believe, are also on the line, um, representing Mosquito Squad. And, um, so the proposed uses for Mosquito Squad, um, business or controlled mosquitoes and pests, um, the existing use is an auto retail and detailing, um, business. We're proposing line striking for, um, 20 spaces where 17 are calculated as required. Um, the business is going to act as a, as a hub for their, for the mosquito control operations, um, where, you know, they're expected, you know, 15 employees, where they would park their vans at the site overnight, and in the morning, you know, their personal vehicles would take the place so they'd have to shuffle their cars in and out every day. Um, and, um, so I did have a discussion with the fire, Greg Moore from the Fire Department on this one, and, um, he said that their only requirements were to have unobstructed access to the site and that they would have no issue, uh, you know, any fire, they could fight with ladders, so, um, as long as they can get into the site off, off of 20. They'll, they'll place a new sign in the same location where the existing sign is. And, um, I mean, that's about all we're proposing. They'll, they'll strike the new parking spaces.
Does anybody on the Board have any comments?
Ron, could you ask them to just describe what else it might be now? I'm just wondering exactly where it is.
Sure. This is, this is next to, um, the Goddard School. Um, it's right.
Oh, okay. All right.
To the west of the Goddard School, um, to the east of Tiny Tim's.
Yes. Okay.
Three doors down from Cumberland Farms. On a lot.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Anyone else?
Chair, what's the, uh, what's the easement on the eastern side of the property?
Could you repeat that, Scott? I didn't, I didn't get that. Please identify.
Sure. Uh, Scott Ren, um, there's an easement on the, on the eastern side of the property. Is that in like to pass and repass? Is there a fence there? I believe there's a fence right over, right up against that easement, isn't there?
Um, Mr. Chair, I can answer that. Corey, again, um, the, the, you're talking about the, it's a five foot wide easement, like four foot wide.
Yeah.
Five foot wide easement on the east side is, it's a sightline easement that was put there. I believe this was originally the Goddard School, the first location. I think that was, it was put in there, um, it was in Land Court, the, the documents on it, but what I, what I found, it was some sort of sightline easement, so they can't put anything in there in that easement.
Okay. Uh, and one more, how much, is there any, um, customer access to this, or is this just employees and they're going to be going out on the road all day?
So this is not open to the public. Yeah, it's just, it's active up there, you know, where they'll, you know, go off to their jobs in the morning and, um, from wherever they come and wherever they're going, that's all this, so this, but there is a, an accessible space that will be, be there, it's just it won't be all open to the public.
All right. I don't, I don't love the first parking spot right when you go in. It seems like if people are coming in off 20, you know, sometimes they cross right through. They don't take a perfect nine degree angle, but if it's not the public coming in, I'm not overly concerned about it. Okay.
Anyone else on the Board? Being no further comment, I have a couple of questions myself. In the, uh, north end of the site, where you show the eight, nine by 18, uh, 18 and a half for employee spaces, it'll look like they're stacked. So someone in the front would have to move to the first inside to get, I don't know that call, eyes, is it legal parking space or not? Would I have to have a board?
Uh, to the Chair, um, Mr. Corey, do you have any comments on the site plan?
This is, uh, Chris Boise, representing Mosquito Squad. Don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yep. Um, so after kind of going through this process and looking at, um, you know, the facilities and stuff, we're really looking to park about six service trucks here at this property now. So there'd be about six, you know, service trucks and probably like 10 employees to alleviate some of that congestion and with the parking. And these are really, uh, depots, so our main hub, our main facility is out of Pittsburgh, and then we're kind of locating these depots throughout Massachusetts within our footprint. So we're in Ashland, I'd really like to be in Auburn, uh, in Shamsford, Pittsburgh, Topsfield, um, and they all have about the same, about six to eight trucks.
Steve, that is.
And like you said, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And like you were saying in the beginning, you know, when we're not open to the public, it is seasonal, so we'd only be operating the facility from really April through October, maybe a manager on site in the winter, but we only treat our customers May through September. Um, and the employees would be coming in the morning in their personal vehicle, you know, changing into their uniform, loading their service truck, and then going out for the day and then returning at the end of the day and doing the opposite.
You don't do any snowplowing in the winter?
We do not, no. I mean, we would maintain the lot down the winter. Well, we don't do, um, you know, any snowplowing with the trucks anymore down the winter. That's correct.
And that existing shed, is that yours or is that someone else's in the existing easement in the north section of the plant?
I think I might be able to answer that better than.
Well, they, yeah, I mean, the easement is, I mean, they have access to that easement from, uh, from Auburn Gardens back there at the whole season.
So it's a shed?
It's called a playground easement. Like I said, I think it was the Goddard Schools property at the time from a playground in there, but it's, it's granted to the, the 496 Washington Street property. It drops off quite a bit on the back of that because it was, it definitely looks like, you know, it was intended for, for this property.
So who uses the shed? The only reason I ask is it's over the, it's over the easement line.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you go to the site, I mean, it's, it's intended for, for 496. It's, it's connected to this site that was used. I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's already used or not, but it's intended to be used for this site.
It's intended to be used for your site.
David Mackey, um, with Mosquito Squad, from most of that shed, it looks like it's been there for quite a few years. Um, I think it's been a fixture there over the past several owners, but, um, I think the owner said that he believed that it was, you know, there when he purchased the building, um, originally, and, and, um, we don't really have much more information than that about the shed, other than it's, it's there and it's sitting in that location.
Is it going to be bought by you?
We don't have plans for it.
Any other comments from the Board or from the public? Here being none, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
Steve Chambers, I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Ronnie Brooks, I'll second it.
All those in favor approving the site plan as is?
Close the hearing, for us.
Oh, the hearing is closed.
Vote to close it.
What's that?
You got to vote to close it.
Oh, that's right, you got to vote to close. So all that are voting to close the hearing, Scott?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, John Regan, aye. Do I have a motion to approve the plan as is as presented?
Scott Ren, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor? Scott Ren?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
And myself, John Regan, aye. It is a vote. Good luck with your business. I hope you prosper well.
Thank you. Everybody even. Guys, good luck.
Next up at the 7:05 is the applicant Scott Paul, Southbridge Street Investments LLC, requesting site plan approval under Section 3.2.5.7 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a corrosion engineering firm on the property located at 200 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 18, parcel 36. This isn't a public hearing, right? It is? Could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Steve Chambers, I'll make that motion.
Could I have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor? Scott Ren?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye. It is a vote. Good luck with your business. I hope you prosper well.
Thank you. Everybody even. Guys, good luck.
Next up at the 7:05 is the applicant Scott Paul, Southbridge Street Investments LLC, requesting site plan approval under Section 3.2.5.7 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a corrosion engineering firm on the property located at 200 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 18, parcel 36. This isn't a public hearing, right? It is? Could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Steve Chambers, I'll make that motion.
Could I have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor? Scott Ren?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye. So anyone representing, um, this, this lot and this, in this plan to put a business in there on, on Southbridge Street, is anyone present?
Yeah, so my name's Scott Paul. I'm the emeritus court tech on the applicant. And so we've submitted the plans and some waiver requests for, uh, use of this building as is to set up, um, consulting engineering business at this location.
So is there anything that you're going to do to the lot other than maybe spruce up a little and to the side of the building or with lighting?
I, I'm proposing to use the building as it sits. Um, there's some definition of parking spaces. They're not very well defined at this time, so we've indicated that on the plans that we've submitted along with a dumpster location, but the building is set up so I can use it at this time, um, and move, move the operation in there. We plan to, as part of this sale and acquisition, the lot, all the stuff that you see is intended to be cleaned up and gone inside the building and outside the building.
Um, are there, how many people are going to be working in this building?
There's a, there's 11 people that work currently in a location that I'm in. Um, most of the time, especially, especially now, there's two, three, four people in the office, that's about it. Typically, uh, most of the technicians and engineers are out on project sites in Boston or New Hampshire or Rhode Island, wherever they may be, and so they're not in the office normally, uh, but if everybody was there, it'd be 11 people.
Yeah.
And there's, uh, four vehicles, four company vehicles.
Do we have an idea how many parking spaces are needed for a lot this size? Is there still only 15?
I think your bylaw calls for a lot.
Being that it's not a, minus any, it's not going to be for customers or anything.
No public, no public coming in and out of the building, sir?
No, we're not retail at all. We don't even, we don't even have clients come to see us.
Do you have anybody dropping off samples of pipe or metal to be, um, have the test done on it for corrosion?
No, we get deliveries from UPS, that kind of stuff, because we, uh, part of this building or most of this building will be for, uh, some of the materials and supplies that we use. We, uh, reassemble and fabricate some specialized component for use on various jobs, so we get delivery of those products. But, but people won't come to our job, to this site to see us rarely.
So it'd just be mainly?
We go to, we go to them.
Supply deliveries and your, and your employees?
Excuse me?
It'd just mainly be supply deliveries and your employees?
Yes.
Does anyone on the Board have any comments?
Mr. Chair, Steve Chambers, um, on the plan, uh, spaces 12 through 15, um, are they behind or would they be behind a fence that's currently there?
Uh, I'd like to leave that fence up, yes, and I can add more on the end. There's plenty of space there to add two or four more spaces if I wanted to, but I'd like to leave the fence on the property.
So, again, it doesn't actually show on here. Where does that fence end up in regards to space 15? Is it much further than that or are they driving around it?
Well, I think it probably goes out two more spaces, so maybe 20 more feet towards the, uh, north.
Okay, and in that area behind the fence, is that currently paved?
It is. It's full of, full of junk though. It's full of old signs.
So when you had mentioned, I'm sorry, uh, when you had mentioned, uh, that this, uh, fence goes a few more out, would you be looking to add spaces next to, uh, space 11 on the front of that, or this is the plan you proposed and keep that fence there? Are you looking to modify that as well?
I'm proposing to leave the fence, and if I needed to put in a couple more spaces, there would be two, front to front, front to front like that, moving, uh, being added to the north.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm, uh, through with the questions. Thank you.
Anyone else on the Board have any questions? Being none, is there anyone from the public that like, would like to ask a question or address this potential business? Being none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second, Scott Ren.
All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye. May I have a motion to approve the plan as shown?
I'll make that motion, John.
Thank you, Ron. May I have a second?
Scott Ren, no second.
All those in favor? Scott Ren?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is a vote, and so approved. You're all set.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is Eastland Partners Incorporated, request for site plan approval under Section 3.2.2.1 and 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a two-family dwelling on the property located at 28-30 Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., map 65, parcel 70. Do I have a, open the public here?
Oh, you don't need an, a motion.
You don't need a motion?
That's been continued, and I'm not seeing, um, in attendance. So it's the Board's pleasure to continue this to the next meeting on September 8th. Traffic.
Could I have a motion to postpone this or continue this till, uh, the September 8th meeting?
Ron Brooks, I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Scott Ren, I'll make that second.
All those in favor? Scott Ren?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye. May I have a motion to postpone this or continue this till, uh, the September 8th meeting?
Ron Brooks, I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Scott Ren, I'll make that second.
All those in favor? Scott Ren?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye. It will be continued. Next on the list, we have applicant from SZ LL Realty LLC, a definitive subdivision plan for a 13 lot, single-family home development on the property located at 178 Hampton Street and 19 Eaton Avenue, map 12, parcel 120. This has been continued from 7/21/2020. Is there anyone here representing SZ LL Realty?
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, this is Donald O'Neil. I'm a lawyer for the applicant. I have an office at 68 Pleasant Street in Worcester. Um, also, I believe, uh, should be on the line are Joseph Graham, who's done the engineering, and also Robert O'Neil, who's done the survey work. Um, you got through the agenda pretty quick, so I'm not sure whether they're on or not, but, uh, we had presented, um, this has been continued a number of times, um, there was a plan, um, some extensive plan work to the plan, basically kind of revising, uh, some of the, um, grading on the site I know was prepared, uh, and was, um, submitted, I believe, um, towards the end of last week, um, and I would expect that that's probably gone to Graves Engineering. I'm not sure whether, wouldn't expect that probably they would have an opportunity to review it, um, you know, and is since then, basically to report back, but, um, I guess if, if, if Joe Graham is here, I would ask him to kind of just summarize, um, you know, for the Board, um, you know, the, what's been done and what, uh, in response to previous comments that he had received, uh, but if he's not here, um, then I guess I would say that, um, uh, probably the, it would make sense. But if he's not here, then I guess I would say that probably the, it would make sense to continue to your next meeting to allow Graves additional time to complete their review and report back to us with any comments that they might have.
Don O'Neil, this is Joe Graham, I am on.
Oh, yeah, sure, okay, all right, yeah.
The revisions.
Okay.
Um, I'll just talk about a few of the sticking points for the Graves and I have gone back and forth on, and the revisions that we made since, in this current plan. So this current plan set, we revised the grading by changing the roadway profile, before it was at a one percent slope all the way through the bulb. At this point, we revised it to a two percent, lowering the end of the cul-de-sac, reducing some of the grading in the area, the wetlands are in the, in that rear portion of the lot, so trying to stay away from that area. We've also revised the drainage, there was a, several of the manholes were, had step manholes for the sewer lines, and we've revised the drainage to avoid, there was a tree, a large tree that we were planning to avoid, so we revised the drainage and the sewer connection, actually, to avoid this tree, and reduce a lot of the pipe slopes, as well as the drop manholes that were originally proposed. And the other largest portion of the changes were, there's three existing frontage lots, and because of lowering the roadway cul-de-sac, it didn't make feasible sense to have the sewer connections for those houses continue to be in the rear of the lot. So we've eliminated those, and the applicant has actually asked to take those out of the subdivision, because those were really never part of the cul-de-sac subdivision roadway. Those are just frontage lots that we were tying into our system via the sewer line, so we wanted to propose it all together. However, because that's no longer feasible for the proposed sewer line having extremely steep slopes, we'll have to, if the applicant intends on building those, he'll have to, at that time, provide site plan for those separate. So those are the main points. We're still keeping the entrance to the proposed detention basin off Desper Street, how we had before. We're still proposing one sidewalk along the roadway and ending cul-de-sac, and, so those are the main changes from the previous iteration of the plan.
So the lots being eliminated are six, seven, and eight, is nine, ten, and eleven being eliminated as well?
Yeah, those are the ones along Hampton Street that, that always throughout the previous plan sets had been accessed, and via Hampton Street, they're just being eliminated because prior they were tied in via the proposed sewer line, so we'd have to provide an easement along the rear of their lot. But because the sewer line profile would be too steep as we come down to that cul-de-sac, that it didn't make sense to tie them to the subdivision any more.
So I do want to make sure I have the right lots, six, seven, eight, nine, what about ten through thirteen, will those stay?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so nine through six are being eliminated.
Seven, eight.
Okay.
Uh, no, we intend on keeping lot nine, lot nine's at the cul-de-sac, so that, that house will be fronting on the cul-de-sac, nine, correct, so that will be staying, and it will just be six, seven, eight.
Is that going to be the access to the house, too, is from the, the new road, Road A?
So those will be, those six, seven, and eight will be accessed via Hampton Street.
Right, but they're being eliminated, correct?
Correct, from the subdivision plan.
So the remaining lots on that side of the road, they're all being accessed from the roadway that goes to the cul-de-sac, correct?
Correct.
Any sort of raised, uh?
Not yet. No, I did request the engineer and the applicant, if they were going to, if they had nothing to store water or report, or if they had response to the Graves letter to provide to Graves.
Okay, we'll make sure you get that. I'm calling in my phone, because I've had bad access with my computer, so I'll make sure you get that.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Does that mean no site work is going to take place on those three sites?
I'm sure probably using storage or long gravel or whatever.
Yeah, at this point, the applicant's not sure what he wants to do with those sites. If he does intend on doing them, as, he'll have to submit a separate site plan, and obviously that would be ended up in conjunction, part of why originally we showed them together. However...
I would imagine that changes all the calculations on all the drainage and everything that's been done?
It changes some of the existing, you're correct, it doesn't change a lot of the proposed closed system as far as piping and catch basins, because that is limited to the cul-de-sac roadway. But it does change some of the areas and the hydrology of the models.
Okay, and that's all been revised?
Yes, I should have been sent out, I'm going to check on why it wasn't, and make sure you guys get a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Being the elimination of those three lots, it means you're going to have more pervious area instead of less pervious area, correct?
Correct, so there would be more undisturbed area as part of the subdivision.
Well, last question, is it going to be undisturbed, or are you going to, they going to possibly use that for storage, like when they strip the site below, store the gravel there before you put in the road, pipe, all that stuff?
You shouldn't need to, those lots are higher up, and actually, when they get filled, they'll be filled, obviously that would have to be brought in for the grading for those, because it does drop off in that area. So I, yeah, I believe he'll, yeah, tackle those separately.
Does anyone else on the board have any comments?
John, it's Ronnie. A question I have is, is it, when you come up Eaton Ave, and you approach the last house on the left, how do you propose to keep runoff from coming down onto the side of their house with that big piece of ledges and stone?
So the proposed roadway has granite curving on both sides of it, coming through, there is a catch basin at the front of the, at the entrance to the proposed road, and using the granite curving and also the roadway profile is sloping downward into the cul-de-sac to help eliminate those issues.
Yeah, because we can't have it that it directs water onto that property.
Correct.
So I am assuming that all drainage is kept on the lot and goes out to the big, the drainage area that you're going to make in lot sixteen?
Um, yeah, so the drainage areas have been updated to reflect, I guess, the reduced project scope.
What do you have the grading plan now, and I, I'm looking at Mr. Brooks was, I mean, the grave behind the houses, it's hard to read the plan, but... Contour elevations on the upper part of the page, you used to have one, five seventy, five eighty, and another one, I don't see another, five thirty. That's telling me there's any slopes toward that, you have low point right there at five thirty.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if other people are having difficulty, it's hard for me to hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm having a little bit.
I can't hear John either.
Okay, so, on the side of Road A toward the top of the page, can everybody hear that?
Yep, thank you.
I'm having difficulty finding elevations for the contour lines, I see one, and then it goes from there to five thirty, which is downhill from five sixty-eight and five seventy. So my concern is where lot one is, that goes down to the adjoining lot, or up at the corner here, I mean, this is all heading down, down the hill, I don't know what's containing that from keeping it from going into the next lot, unless these contours toward the top of the page actually go up, where there's no elevation on it, so I can't really tell what it does, it's pretty incomplete. Anyone representing the Realty Company have anything to say, the engineer? Or we lost their connection?
Yeah, no, this is Don O'Neil, I'm still here, but I would, that really is a question for Joe, I don't know if we, if we lost him, or, you know, he's not responding, so I think we must have lost him. And, you know, as I indicated before, you know, Graves has the revisions that have, that have come in, and I think those were just delivered last Thursday, I believe. So I guess if, I don't have a plan in front of me either, and I'm on the phone, so I would say that, you know, perhaps that's something that we can make note of that, and then have a response for you when we return next time.
Does anyone else on the board have any comments? Being none, is there anyone from the public that has comments? Being none, I only have one, if you could tell your client that when you come up to the end of that street, when you get to Hampton Street, you can't see to the left because the grass is too high, he needs to cut it down before you have an accident. Do I have a motion?
This is Robert O'Neil, I'm still on, I will convey that to the applicant.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Do I have a motion to continue this till the September eighth meeting?
John, it's Ronnie Brooks, I'll make the motions.
Do I have a second?
Steve Chambers, I'll second.
All those in favor, Scott Ren?
I'm accused from this matter.
Okay, Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
I take that as an aye. Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye. It is a vote, it will be continued to September eighth meeting.
Thank you.
We'll move right out of the other business handle?
Yeah. The, Dr. Alex Barnes.
What's that?
Dr. Alex Barnes.
Our next up is other business subdivision modification, Packard Jock Farms, subdivision seventy-one Curtis Street, request for extension, Packard Jock Farms, subdivision seventy-one Curtis Street. Is there anyone from Packard Jock Farms subdivision being represented here?
Yes, I'm present, I'm Morocco Manic Nellie.
Can you hear me? Can't hear you. At this time, I'd like to request a five-minute recess, if someone could give me a motion on that, to give this gentleman a chance to get back online.
It's Scott Ren, so moved. Is it possible for you to hear me now?
Can hear you now.
There was a tremendous amount of static a couple of minutes ago. I apologize, I don't know what that was.
It's cell phones, I mean, no apology needed.
I'm on a computer, I'm not on a cell phone.
So, you're in here asking for an additional extension, you've already had, this will make you, bring you into seven years total of extensions.
Well, actually, we resubmitted in two thousand and eighteen.
Correct, what I'm talking about overall, you started in two thousand and fifteen.
It's been a long process. We had intended to begin, if it wasn't for the current situation, we were going to get into the ground in the spring, the equipment's actually on the property, obviously, there were problems, given the current pandemic situation.
Has there been any updating to the plans?
No, they haven't changed since you approved them in two thousand and eighteen.
Well, that approval, I don't think we ever approved them in two thousand and eighteen, we kept continuing.
No, we had to resubmit, and we had to revise the plans at that point. We did revise the plans in two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, June twentieth. It's two years ago, so it's hard to remember. So you're looking...
I understand.
You're looking for another extension, and I can remember this very vividly, all the comments I had on the plans, and I noticed nothing changed.
We, I'm sorry, did you say trouble with the plans?
I had a lot of comments, you were very irate when you left the meeting the last time I made the comments. They even offered to sit.
I don't know how to respond to that, I thought we complied with everything that you had requested.
No, I mean, just looking at the plans quickly this time, because it's hard to read the half-size plans or quarter-size plans, whatever I have. The existing sewer main manhole that's in Curtis Street, it's showing an existing outside drop. I don't... I don't think so. And I don't know why you'd have a drop there anyway, you can't put it together, it's only a foot difference in the, in the inverts, between coming out of Curtis Ave, and on, I mean, coming out of your road, and then Curtis Street. It's only a foot difference, you can't even put the fittings together there to do that. And the other thing I happened to notice tonight was your, your inverts on your drain, where the six-inch and twelve-inch are the same invert elevation, that's an engineering no-no, it's either crown to crown, or the smaller pipe invert to crown, it's never invert to invert.
If there are, I have changed engineering firms from the people who actually designed this. If, if there are things that you need changed, or you, you are picking up on this time that weren't picked up on the last time, I'd be glad to have the new engineering firm address those things. I fired these people. I'd be happy to do whatever you think should be done, I'm, I'm not here to do things incorrectly. Um, I'm not an engineer, but I am a contractor, and I consider myself a pretty good one, and I do not want to do this incorrectly. If you think there's something wrong with these plans, I'd be happy to revise them.
Okay, well, if we extend this, you will have time to revise them. I'm not going to get into the step-by-step tonight, it would take too long.
Is there, how, can I ask you a question? How, um, as far as your concerns, is there some way that we, I can get a list of those concerns?
Yeah, I'll have to talk to Adam, I, I think I left a plan with the former, um, town planner, and whether they kept that on file or not, I don't know.
For the Chair, I think this is limited to the extension at this point, I mean, back in July of two thousand and eighteen, we approved this on a four-to-one vote, so we're not really hearing amendments to the plan at this point.
I assume you have to vote on this before you look at the modifications?
Yes, we have to vote to extend it.
Okay.
Because you requested a, a variance, you want to get rid of your granite curbing and go to, uh, bituminous curbing, I don't think, I don't think Bill's going to go along with that, Mr. Coyle, I mean, TPW Director.
Actually, in the plans, if you go to Sheet Seven, he, he submitted two types of curbing. On Sheet Four, he calls for the vertical granite curve, and then on Sheet Seven, he shows the, a section of the roadway with the Massachusetts DOT bituminous curve. I'm just trying to clarify what's in the plan.
If I remember correctly, Mr. Coyle was here during that meeting, and he was pretty adamant about granite curving at the opening of the, the new street putting, that you want to put in.
Oh, no, I, I'm not concerned, I, I'm fine with, you're talking about the entrance from Curtis?
Correct.
No, this engineer has specified two different types of curve throughout the project. He has got the entire project using vertical curve, vertical granite curve. If you look at Sheet Four and Sheet Five, you will see VGA, I mean, VGC throughout, not just at the opening. I do not have a problem with it at the opening, he's got it through, throughout the entire subdivision. But he's also got it, a concrete bituminous curve, in section. I'm just trying to clarify this.
I'll throw, through the Chair, I did speak to Mr. Coyle on this, and, uh, your comments are correct, he would prefer the granite curbing, the, the, by the roadway opening.
At, at the entrance.
At the entrance.
I don't have a problem with that.
Any comments from the board?
Yep, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to know what the plans are with the extension, when we could expect work to actually take place, is there a timeline, or is it going to be?
This is a very difficult time in reference to banking and financing and going forward with what's going on with the pandemic. This is an extremely difficult time to give you a timeline. I, I, I would like to do that, if it was normal circumstances, I probably could, it, it's just, this is a difficult time.
Any other comments?
John, this is Ronnie. What do we do with the concerns that you have? Yeah, no, I was going to vote to extend it, and it seems as though you've got some concerns that you don't think certain things are right, and we're going to extend it, should we have them resubmit, or come back with a modified plan, or a changed plan with all the corrections in it, and then see whether or not we vote to extend it? I'm not sure what to do here.
I don't think I can do that, because I was outvoted four to one.
Through, through the Chair, right now, the only matter was the extension and the modification, we really can't, um, take up anything else.
Correct. Do I have a motion to extend, or are there any other comments from the board first? I'm sorry. Being none, are there any comments from the
Why was the ninety-day period missed to, to extend?
It was right in the middle of the shutdown. When the, when the governor shut the Commonwealth down.
Through the Chair, what date was that exactly? I, I'm
The, um, the town clerk received the decision August fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, so it would have expired on Sunday, Saturday.
I, I think there's some extenuating circumstances here.
Adam, are you, through you, John, Adam, are you saying that this doesn't, that the current one doesn't expire till this Sunday?
It, it expired two days ago.
The request for an extension would have been due ninety days prior to the expiration of the, of, you know, this past week.
Oh, so he has to apply ninety days prior to?
Correct.
It's, it's the pleasure of the board, what they like to do.
Do we have any other comments on whether or not, or any more discussion on the extension that's being requested from the board?
What kind of, have you made any progress in terms of securing your, your bonds for the road, or?
I, I actually, what was going to go forward with that, um, from what I understood from Matthew Benoit, he had actually given me the paperwork in reference to a couple of different methods of doing that, one was, I guess, a lien on the deed. Is that correct?
Oh, you need a bond, or you need a tri-party agreement, is my understanding, so it'd be, again, financing, the bank holding money aside to secure performance of the, of the road completion. I could be wrong, I, I defer.
It was my understanding that you could also lien the property. That's what, that's, that was the information I got from the gentleman prior to Adam.
John, it's Ronnie. I, I, I don't recall us, I, that I can recall, I might be wrong, that we did much of that lien, and we either got the tri-party, tri-party agreement, that Scott just mentioned, or the, uh, bond, secured the bond.
I'm not arguing for one or the other, I, I will do whatever has to be done, I was just, I was under that impression from, from Mr. Benoit. That's all.
So, uh, would it be my understanding be correct that if we give you the two-year extension, you'd be able to get this done, as just stated, instead of a lien, the tri-party agreement?
I think so.
Was that a yes, Mr. Antonelli?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we, I heard you.
So, through the Chair, this is Nick, I just want to confirm that this should have been requested prior to May seventeenth, right? Which is ninety days from this past Saturday, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Being none, or any comments from the public? Being none, I'm looking for a motion either to approve the extension, or not approve the extension.
Mr. Scott Ren, um, Mr. Antonelli, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, due to COVID, I, I, I think I speak for the rest of the board members, though, we don't like keeping these things open forever, um, the town hall was open, you had, you did have the opportunity to request these extensions, um, but I get it with COVID, I understand. Uh, I, I just ask that, you really, we get moving on this project, we either move forward or, or not, um, but to keep continuing out, I mean, I, I thought the same way John did, that it's, this is seven years in the making, um, so with that, I'll, I'll motion to approve the extension.
John, can I ask a question, uh, before Scott's motion goes through?
Sure.
Do we have, is he looking for a two-year extension?
Correct.
I mean, can we, can he modify it so that, as Scott just said, we get it done quicker and it doesn't continue on to be only for a year?
Through the Chair, this is, uh, Nick, I just want to make a, the comment to doing something like that, um, you know, we're, if, we're looking to make an, uh, an exception, an extension here on something like this, given the current state of what's going on right now, it would say we're not in the same place twelve months from now, um, especially if things get shut down again, so I think two years is probably, um, required, and this, you know, this is my opinion, but it's probably required in the type of circumstance. Going shorter might just be setting, um, setting us up to be in the same place a year from now, or nine months from now, if you think about it.
We're doing a year from now, we're doing that on today's day.
Yeah.
But I imagine if, if we're at the same spot in a year, he has to request an extension, it would now be ninety days out, so.
So in, yeah, in nine months, he'd have to request another extension, we only gave him a year.
Correct.
Right, right.
So
And, I mean, what's the likelihood that we're going to be, uh, you know, our current situation, we're going to be completely solved by then, so.
You don't know, it's going to be solved in two years, nobody knows.
You're right.
I don't want to extend this for a great amount of time. Like Scott said, and I said in the beginning, this has been in the making, this will make it in the making for seven years, it's been in the making for five years already.
If I may say one thing in reference to your, the comment about seven years, I, I was not, uh, I, I moved to this location a little over a year ago to get this project done, um, I lived over two hours away when this all first started with my partners, um, it wasn't going anywhere, and that was when I came back in and reapplied to you in two thousand and eighteen, and then I actually moved into the property to try to get this done a year ago. I didn't anticipate, I, I, like I said, I have equipment sitting in the back of the, the property here, and I thought I was going to get started, and then, kind of, the stuff hit the fan.
Well, the plan date was December twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, is when it started.
I, I understand that.
Scott, you made the motion to approve the two-year extension?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Through the Nick, I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye. Scott Ren?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
No.
Myself, I abstain.
Okay, that's approvable for the extension.
Okay, so the approval duly noted has passed for the extension for two years?
Want to take up the modification?
Yeah, the request for the modification for the Packard Jog Farms, Subdivision Seventy-One, Curtis Street, may, hey, do we have any explanation from, uh, Mr. Antonelli with the, what the
Like I said, the, the both types of curbing were specified in the plans. In plan, um, on Sheet Four and Sheet Five, uh, he denotes vertical granite curve, VGC, but then on Sheet Seven, on his specification sheet, he, in section, shows bituminous curbing, and, um, in Detail One, and then in Detail Twelve, he shows vertical granite curve. Actually, he showed, he shows bituminous curve more times in detail than he shows granite curve. All I'm asking for is, and I understand Mr. Coyle wants it at the entry, which is fine, but can we clarify the use of bituminous curve throughout the remainder of the subdivision?
You said there was any problem with that?
No.
The TPW doesn't have a problem with that, so are there any, uh, comments from the board regarding this minor change?
Just for clarification, it will be all vertical, right? It's not going to be that Cape Cod burn?
It's whatever, uh, Mr. Coyle would like to see. I submitted three types.
John, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
There's the, there's the vertical granite, then there's the Cape Cod berm with the bevel, and then they also make one out of asphalt that's vertical?
Yeah, it's, it's what you normally see on the streets today, every street that Auburn has redone in the last couple of years has the vertical bituminous, the Cape Cod berm is more like a flat triangle, it needs a little wider, uh, berm pad on it.
Yeah.
Did that answer your question, Ron?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? There being none, but
That's minor modification first. Motion, that's a minor modification first.
It's that.
Do I have a motion, this is a minor modification?
So moved, Scott Ren?
Have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor, Scott Ren?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Myself, I abstain. It is a vote. Now I have to, to motion to approve it, right? Do I have a motion to approve this minor change?
For clarification, that's for vertical bituminous, correct?
Uh, the gentleman said whatever Bill preferred. I believe Bill prefers the vertical, because that's what's going in all the streets we're redoing.
I remember a lot of drainage concerns we had on the right side of the project, if you're looking at the plan, so I think the vertical would help. I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor? Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Scott Ren?
Aye.
Myself, I abstain. Myself, I abstain. It is a vote. We're all set with that. You're all set, Mr. Antonelli?
Thank you very much.
We have a discussion in the reserve at Ashworth Hill. Construction cost estimate, Artemis Road?
Yes, I left that on from the last meeting. They were going to come back with a new estimate, uh, since they were doing some of the work out there on this past month. I don't have any estimate yet, so I'll just carry this forward. Either the next meeting or the meeting after. There's no action needed to be taken.
All we have left is the meeting minutes.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as is?
So moved, Scott Ren.
I'm sorry. Need a motion to approve the meeting minutes from meeting at 7:21, 2020.
So I'll second.
Sorry, you didn't understand that.
Scott, did you make the motion?
I made the motion and Ronnie, Ronnie seconded.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Scott Ren?
Aye.
Myself is an aye. It is a vote.
Um, did you want to mention that other thing? Uh, Nick?
Adam has something he wants to bring up and read about Nick.
So, um, Mr. Lynch was, um, named, was the Business Journal's 40 under 40 the other day. Um, it'd be nice to mention it.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Good job.
There he is.
Thank you. There we go.
Man himself.
I liked it so much, I actually got the print version too. So I like print.
You must not go there, there's too much information.
I necessarily texted out, so good stuff. Thank you so much.
I can win for sale if anyone wants that.
Next meeting is September 8th. Adam?
Yes.
I don't believe there's any business unforeseen by the chair. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Make that motion, John.
Well, Steve made the motion. Someone asked to second it. You both said I make the motion at the same time. If you want to second it, Ronnie, that would be good.
I'll second it.
All those in favor to adjourn the meeting? Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Scott Ren?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye. Meeting adjourned.